Roll call.
Mayor Corbett.
Here.
Orwin Hudson.
Here.
Orwin Matthews.
Here.
Orwin Spicer.
Here.
I need to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Still moving.
So good.
All in favor? Aye. And opposed? Uh, new business, discuss amendments to municipal code Title 17, refuse and trash disposal.
Yes, sir. If you don't mind me, uh, the, uh, our public service director, Andy, has been reviewing the refuse trash disposal policy for quite some time. And we've seen the opportunity with, uh, with our 10-year contract coming up with GFL. And having to throw out the bid right now to get new trash services in the city. He thought it would be best at this time to go ahead and make those revisions. So he did a major overhaul in formatting of our order. That's pretty much a lot of the same content. Some of the verbiage has changed. As we talked about, we included a couple of things and I'll let Andy go over all that with you. And then the other thing we're going to discuss a little bit is the cyber security plan. This is something that the state has put on, on all the public utility water and wastewater facilities that they have to have a cyber security plan. And I'll let him talk about that too. So, Andy, the board's yours.
Thank you, sir. Uh, thank you guys for coming today and listening to me, uh, speak about this. Uh, so the Title 17, like Jerry said, uh, kind of needed an overhaul, a little outdated there. And we know the new rules coming in, we had a new contract coming up. We felt like it was time to maybe revamp it and make it a little clearer for people. Uh, some of the main notable differences I did to it was, uh, we split the chapters in two. So you had your trash contract and then you also had your, uh, your community with the city services. And that's in chapter two. So we kind of split those apart. So the kind of the state of rush pickup with your regular trash pickup. So we split those apart. Uh, secondly, uh, made the definitions section that explains the key elements mentioned throughout Title 17. The whole place will help clarify any misunderstandings, i.e. things like e-waste or our concrete waste were not defined in the, uh, every Title 17. And we get a lot of calls, you know, calls about, hey, can we drop off our TVs or what have you? We don't take none of that. We don't have the proper methods to dispose of that kind of stuff. So we broke all that out. Uh, a couple of other they look redundant, uh, in the definitions on both chapter one and two. But the reason being is because sometimes we had to define what it was in chapter one. Don't pick up versus in chapter two, we do pick up. So that's why you see, uh, twice.
Would you be able to go through and kind of maybe highlight any major changes that you've seen it or minor changes as you go through this? Like, chapter one, kind of go through it if you have any notes on that?
Yes.
If you could do that. So that way they can follow through.
The additional or just the actual, uh, sections?
The sections that you thought that you made some changes to?
I did. Yep, I got that for you.
So if we start on like 17-101, refuse defined?
Yeah.
I guess if you could kind of walk us through that.
Okay. And then the third thing I did, uh, that was a notable difference was we enhanced service sections like Jerry was just saying throughout Title 17. Uh, we actually added eight sections in chapter two and we have additional eight sections in chapter one. So basically like what Jerry said earlier, we had a couple of things were defined or they were kind of lost in the mix. So we broke them out so it's easier to understand, uh, things such as your, um, the animals. Uh, because a lot of people have their dogs and we want to make sure that we keep the contractor or employee safe if they're trying to do backdoor service. So that kind of all ties into each other. Uh, that's actually 17, uh, dash one point two. And like I said, it's in goal one, but now we broke it out for easier access. Uh, we added additional information such as 17 dash one one nine, uh, littering prohibited. That was not in our first one. Uh, had 17 one weight collection and contraction. And that states that the board of mayor alderman has a right to reject any and all bids. And I'll explain that a little bit later. But that was also not in the previous one. But now that kind of spells out, you guys have the right to reject any and all bids. And I'll, like I said, I'll go down a little bit deeper. Uh, the first section I'm going to kind of go over with you, I think, we covered definitions. We added that in there. 17 dash four.
So if you go to 14, is that where you're at on your book?
So, I'm not even, I have a cheat sheet here, but yeah.
Page three of nine? I'm looking at your pages.
Yes, 17 one four.
So that'd be, uh, page 13 for them in your booklet.
Okay. So I'm, I'm going to hit the highlights of what I, what we added in and some of the stuff that would change. Because some of it was the same, we just kind of like expanded it a little bit.
Okay.
But this one here, uh, premises kept clean. Uh, again, we expanded this section from one sentence to expand what I feel will cover the authoritative responsibilities. And give examples, not just pertaining homeowners or not pertaining just to homeowners, uh, residents, but also city-owned properties. I.e. greenway streams and sanitary sewer, uh, or any occupied premises within city. So, you know, you could probably sit there and say, the answer is true. How does that make sense with trash? Well, people throw stuff down the toilet, like your pills or what have you. That's all bad stuff. Uh, fat holes and greases is bad. We don't want that going down the drains. And I'll touch on that a little bit later as well, too. Uh, 17 one oh five, uh, garbage dumpster and court. This is another section that we revamped. Uh, we bumped this up by one hour, uh, with your permission. Uh, it went from seven thirty to six thirty. Uh, start times will help, uh, with the school traffic in the morning rush. Uh, from a city standpoint, the contractor has mechanical issues. The process is able to start earlier than one hour. They may be able to go ahead and finish their route for the day. Cause they later need to start. They get backed up and then they don't finish their route and get a lot of complaints. So we figured starting one hour earlier, earlier would be effective. Um, I did check a couple of cities around us in case y'all were gonna ask me. So Lebanon, they started at seven thirty, uh, like we did. Villasville, they started six thirty for their trash service. Portland, they're six AM. So we're kind of right in the middle there. So if we can do it at six thirty, I think it'd be mutual benefit both to the city and the contractor. So I'll stop there if you've got any questions. Cause that's kind of a big one. I mean, start time, I mean, you guys have any issues with that or you guys okay with that? Okay. Um, then we added swill. Uh, that was not in there either. It's any liquid mass waste or food matter or slop. Again, we're talking about fog. Um, this pertains to the fog program and I felt, uh, it's needed to be included into the sanitation. And it also follows adjacent city codes. So this isn't new. It's just something we didn't have in our, in our Title 17. So we added that in there as well. Uh, 17 dash one oh eight, uh, collection and contraction of, uh, as with the previous contract. It was a, uh, two, five-year increments for a total of 10 years, uh, term for the sanitation contract. However, with the new contract, the contract has 90 days, uh, each year to submit in writing and extension. In addition to a maximum 2.5% increase in trash service. So that's, that's actually kind of low, uh, but you know, in all fairness, 2.5% is not much to ask if you're running with fuel prices going up in insurance. So, and then like I said, I was going to touch on this again. The section also defines that the board of mayor alderman may reject any and all bids and may award the contract based upon any of the following factors. Big price, qualifications, reputation, education, training, experience, and financial ability of the bidder and its key employees and owners. And thirdly, the, the place of the residence, accessibility of the owners, managers, supervisors, and/or other employees. And this was not in the original contract, but I want to put that in there so there's a little confusion on who the final say is, which is the board of mayor alderman. Uh, 17 one one two, animals. Uh, we didn't want to specify dogs. So we just said animals in general, because I mean, I don't think people have snakes or whatever else they have nowadays. Uh, this is geared towards the backdoor service and keeping contractors' employees safe if they go get the trash can. And, uh, we defined this also in the contract. Uh, see, we added 17 one one six, hours of collection located near residential buildings. Uh, this prevents commercial contractors, uh, running in early hourly hours. Where if commercial establishments are located within 2,000, 2,500 feet of a residential property. Uh, so that means they can't run between six AM and 10 PM, or I'm sorry, 10 PM to six AM. So we didn't have that in there either, so I put that in there. Even though we don't, uh, contract commercial services, we still have to adhere to this policy. Cause we don't want them running at three o'clock in the morning or, you know, 12 o'clock at night picking up trash cans. If, or dumpsters, I should say, if they're close to a residence.
Are you guys going to notify the businesses of this so that they don't get caught?
We can. Cause usually it's Republic or Waste Management, I think, that does most of the big bulk pickup. But we can definitely send this out to them.
How do you enforce it?
Good question. I guess when we get complaints.
There's no teeth in it. You just say you can't be there.
Well, if we get a complaint, we can make that call. That's how we can do it if someone's complaining. I mean, you're, I can say at three o'clock in the morning, a lot of dump trucks, but I mean, not our, our garbage trucks. But if I get a complaint, I guess we can.
We'll call PADD.
Yeah.
Well, and if somebody is called, is there a fine to that and to that company for doing so?
Another good question. We didn't assess any fines with this. Uh, again, this is just a start. We can add something in, but not to have nothing in there. I think we'll be foolish. So I feel like putting something there, at least trying to hold them accountable somewhat. Um, I guess it would go back to the police department with noise complaints. And I guess they could find them that way. Cause that's what it would be. It would be a noise complaint. And then something that Jared, I had discussed a while back, uh, 17 dash one one eight, uh, fee schedule. Uh, we added a semi-annual bulk rubbish drop-off day from eight AM to 12 PM. That occurs the second Saturday in January and June. Uh, we did January because it's two weeks after Christmas. So we figured with Christmas trees and what have you, they're probably going to want to bring them down there and dump them.
Ask us if we could offer it on Saturday. So we're going to try this out.
Just one I see here.
Yeah.
Uh, as long as residents have proper ID, uh, they can, we don't want people from Villasville and Galveston and Henderson to drop their trash off for our citizens, for our city residents. So, uh, yeah, so that's, we had that in there as well. Uh, 17 one one nine, uh, littering prohibited. Again, this was added for clarity and understanding. Even though the planning department enforces trash complaints, uh, public services also has a role regarding stormwater relating to water quality. And then the last one that I think was important was 17 one two one, uh, backdoor service. We added, uh, an additional line in there. It was line C. Any resident that can clearly show that they have an uncommon reason for the request. The reason why we put that in there is because, uh, we had an issue with their metal or townhomes where the trash cans are by the road. And they had that little cement pad poured right there. People complain because their cans are there and they don't pull them up to the front. So they have issues with trying to put their cans up because it's so, that area is just so small by the townhomes. So that's something we're looking into. But again, we just want to keep it fair. If there's a, if there's an issue and we understand it, we'll work with the, with the residents. Again, I know we're just going to charge.
There was a section that said if you had more than one trash can, they'd be three feet apart?
Yes.
Personally, I live in a subdivision where there's no way you can put them three feet apart. Um, is that going to be like a fine if someone doesn't have three feet apart?
No, it protects the, the, the trash company. That's pretty standard too. I've actually seen over four or five feet. But three feet, I mean, it's, no, they're not going to find you. But I think when, when they bring that arm down, they sling it down. They don't want to hit the other can. But they just have to be more conscious of their action. That's all. But if I said a foot, I don't know if a foot would work. Cause when you put that grapple down, it's kind of has like a knuckle and they stick out. So you're going to have to have some room between your cans.
Yeah. I understand that.
And that's, that, that was the highlights of it. Uh, do you guys have any questions? In my opinion, when I read the original Title 17, and I'm sure if you all read it as well, it's kind of geared towards 10 years ago when we were doing our own trash service. Didn't really, didn't really split it apart. But we did it all. So that's why it was all encompassed under one chapter. This is why we split it up into this time. And the fee rate, we didn't want to get into too much detail with that right now because, um, we're bidding it out. So we don't know. We don't know what the contract's going to come back at. And once we get to that, we can discuss the fee rates as well. But currently we are on the sinking ship. We're, we're, we're charging too low. Right now it's $19. We should be at, uh, $22 a can, just to sustain. But again, I don't want to go too deep into that because I don't even know what the contract's going to be, how much that's going to be. I do have one misstatement, by the way. I already told Derek about it. So it's, it's the within 200 or 2,500 feet. I put with 2,000, 2,500 feet. So it's within. That's the commercial pickup.
That was in 17, there's one 16.
Where'd you put that number?
The 2,500 feet. It's an interest, I just looked at interest standards like around us and what other people were doing.
It's a long ways away.
It is a long ways away.
That probably makes, uh, every dumpster in White House be dumped.
The radios and everything else, the music and, but yeah, it was just, I just researched like what I said. I looked at, I think, Hendersonville, Galveston, Villasville, Johnsonville, everybody. I looked at everybody. It had to be like a Bruce Lee of a Title 17. I thought that would fit the city, you know, our best interests.
It was, should say prohibited.
Prohibited?
Yeah.
Prohibited? I can change that. What changes were you?
You basically did. At 2,500 feet.
Yeah.
Basically a house within 2,500 feet of every trash can.
Do you want it, do you want it trucked in? You want it a little bit less or?
Probably. It's 5,000 feet in the miles.
Yeah, that's half a mile.
That's half a mile.
So you want to do it shorter?
Let's do two miles.
You want to do 1,500 feet? I mean, that's what we're here for.
It's just, it's just prohibited.
I'm just saying about the, the point of it is to, to avoid disturbing people with the noise. I think a half a mile, nobody's going to hear it probably.
No.
So. When you get into a.
I mean, if you're going to, if you're just saying they just can't do it, then, um, 2,500 feet, you must have said it just can't do it.
So I think we're looking at kind of long though. Um, so let's say McDonald's is here and your house is here. That's one thing. But primarily commercials way over there and you're having to drive past those houses to get there. And the truck makes noises going by, you know? I don't really think you're going to hear them dumping, but I mean, if you want to shorten that up, you can. But I think, like I said, for the most part, I put that in there because we don't have any regulations against.
Big enough city to have nights, pick up eating ground, I believe. I mean, Nashville, especially downtown Nashville.
But now we're getting that industrial TVA sites and things of that nature. So I'm trying to look ahead.
Yeah.
You know, so.
I think like Walmart, Kroger, those places, I'm not sure whether they, they make their, but.
I guess, like I said, with the finding, that would be something the police, I guess, with a noise complaint, it would be. I'm actually want to add a fine into this, but.
When they pick up coverage?
I'm having four or five in the mornings. I'm really early when you're sleeping. You have a deep sleep and you hear that some trash truck banging on a dumpster.
It's one night a month.
Yeah, a couple of times.
I like that much most.
Well, that's, I mean, that's why we're, we had to study session so we could get some just general casual input from all of you and so we can make any necessary changes. So when you get to your first reading this afternoon, I mean, after the next, the next meeting, we can prove it with, uh, with amendments as you all requested and then go to the second reading.
Say prohibit, it's easier to understand that.
2,500 feet. Did you do that?
I mean, basically that's what you're doing anyway.
Yeah.
Andy, you have a question? On the definition of electronic, should that be electronic waste? Is this what that is defining?
Yes. And I think I put that in there as e-waste, electronic waste.
Right, but it looks like the word that's defined is just electronics.
Yeah. Should be electronic waste.
Yeah. She was saying we changed the wording to where, cause right now it says defining electronics. Having it defined as electronic waste. That would be the term that's defined.
Mm-hmm. That makes sense.
Okay, so electronic waste. So this, so just like electronics and electronic waste of, okay.
Yeah.
Put it for a season.
Yeah, I mean, just to keep it warm.
Could I ask a question? I did not notice a provision for diapers and dog poop. You said you could not put in human waste or animal waste. So what, where is that supposed to go?
In the old section, it did say you couldn't put animal.
It's what?
The old section, you said you couldn't put animal waste in the trash can, but we asked people to pick it up in a bag. Where's it going to go?
So you just mean you can't dump it in the trash can?
Everything.
Loose diaper or whatever.
It's supposed to be in a bag anyway, so.
Okay.
I think that's defined the, uh.
This is a review.
Actually, the queue out there.
If this defined, if the review says that it has to be, that it can be in a bag, that all loose, that's me to that.
That's a problem we run into as well. And again, how do you hold them accountable? Cause we get these complaints that the trash guy will dump the can and stuff goes flying everywhere. But technically, for the Title 17, you're supposed to have it in a bag. So it's now GFL responsible to get out of the truck to pick up stuff at the home or the not, you know, type. And again, how do you hold them accountable? You know?
I'd say we move on to the next one.
Ready?
Any other colleagues?
No.
All right. Other new business, uh, discuss the cyber security plan for the wastewater infrastructure.
Okay, this is the men's senate bill number two two eight two, House bill number two three four six. Uh, utility is defined as means of a public utility that provides electric, water, wastewater, or natural gas services. So that falls into us, cause we have wastewater services. Uh, by July first of 2023, or within one year after a utility is formed, which were reformed. Uh, we have, uh, and whichever is later, utilities shall prepare and implement a cybersecurity plan to provide for the protection of utilities' facilities from unauthorized use, alteration, alteration, ransom, or destruction of electronic data. This is copyrighted on the website, so I didn't make this up. Uh, utilities shall annually submit documentation of the utility's compliance with this section to the commission. Again, this is by July first of 2023 of this year. So we only have a couple more months to get this done. Um, I just want to tell you guys why I chose Jacobs. I chose Jacobs Engineering because they model our entire current and future system. They did a model update in 2021. They already have 95% of the inner workings, including the wastewater treatment plant itself, what they designed. Uh, we have weekly meetings strictly with Jacobs staff and monthly meetings with Jacobs and subcontractors. Where Jacobs have always been, or has city's best interests in mind. And they have been phenomenal to work with. So that was kind of the back reason why we chose them. And we felt like if we were to go into another engineer, they would have to go back at all information they already have. It will take more time. We may not meet our deadline. And that's pretty much the basis of why we moved Jacobs, because they're already trained into our system. So we didn't feel like going out and trying to find somebody else and learn all the new aspects. It would be, it'd be too complicated. So Jacobs is here. Uh, if you have any questions regarding the contract or maybe some cyber security question, if you guys have any. Uh, Paul is here from Jacobs. Any questions you guys might have?
Is this a one-time?
Yes, sir.
Hundred twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
But it says we have to, uh, every two years update it?
Annually, yes. Or yes, semi-annually.
Every two years?
Well, at that time it's built. So we're just going to, so basically as you get new listings or new infrastructure, that'll just be added into the existing contract.
So what if they change the parameters of the bill?
Well, yeah.
It's kind of like we did our surplane, we're doing a new surplane because they changed, changed the game plan that we had before.
Correct, the EPA changes.
So they, they change this. Is it going to be a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars every two years or?
No, sir. Well.
Or do we have any idea?
I, well, I hope they don't change it every two years. I mean, this is the first time I've ever seen this. So I'm 47 years old. I've been in the industry for 30 some years. So hopefully they don't do it every, I mean, like I said, they're going to.
You're, you're supposed to come in doing an assessment. So it would be a few every two years for somebody like Jacobs to come in and do assessment?
Most people have, we'll have to do it every two years, do an assessment to upgrade the policy, our cybersecurity plan.
That'll be something less than a hundred twenty-five.
Almost definitely.
I hope so, but.
Yeah.
How many of these have you already done?
Oh, I think I've. So our, um, our cybersecurity group is not located in, out of our national office, which is where I'm serving White House. So I can't answer directly how many plans we've done like this, but, um, our cybersecurity team has done many. I, I don't know if I would want to say dozens. I'm not sure if that's accurate or not, but, um, it's not, it's not a first for us. This is the first time we are responding specifically to this bill for, this bill is specific to the state of Tennessee.
So other states have this, have this in, uh, the process before?
Yes, yes. And, um, I will say that the, um, water and wastewater is actually coming, um, somewhat late to the game for cybersecurity. Um, having plans like this in place for, um, electrical utilities or gas utilities, um, has been standard for, um, for, for years. Um, and so it is now, it's just becoming more common, uh, cybersecurity threats are becoming more sophisticated, frankly. Um, this is becoming commonplace. And there was also a cybersecurity incident at a water treatment plant in Florida a couple of years ago that I think, um, really has pushed us on the front burner for a lot of government entities where, um, a hacker actually changed the chemical dosing rates for, um, a caustic soda, which is a very, very high pH chemical use for pH adjustment. They might increase that rate of chemical feed 20 times, um, into a utility's finished water leaving the water treatment plant. Um, so that was caught by the operators that that staff had manually readjusted. So nobody got hurt. But it just kind of underscored the threat, the vulnerability that the infrastructure faces and kind of why, um, plans like this are necessary, um, in the industry.
And they added that, uh, to what Paul was saying. It actually went the water route first. But you said, why wastewater? We don't drink wastewater. No, but if they was to change our plant process and we were upset, we're just charging to the creeks. So you don't want to put that wastewater route to, to the creeks and obviously back down to the aquifer.
It's easy enough to.
Playing and walking around through the ditches in the summertime and.
Chill fish kills and what have you.
Yeah.
There, there are places in the plant where if somebody closed a gate, you could actually overflow the, the basins of the treatment plant and spill all the sewage out of the ground. Um, someone could, uh, lock down the entire plant's control system and force the city to pay a ransom. Um, in a ransomware type attack. So there, it's not just, hey, our effluent's not going to be so good going to the creek. They can do, they can damage equipment also. There's other creative ways to do harm.
I have a question. So, so we, we're going to, like I say, we do this plan now, but how does it work with the monitoring of it? Like what if something, I mean, like I know my Walther's cyber security that's being updated, you know, as new threats kind of arise. Like, is this ongoing? Is it just a one-time fee and then y'all are out? And then if something happens, we can figure it out? Or how does that work?
Um, well, our, I mean, our contract is certainly a, a one-time fee to develop the plan. That plan is going to need to be, you know, updating, which is not going to be as expensive as building the whole thing from scratch, um, on that, on that regular basis. Um, certainly Jacobs would be available to be that updating party, but the, you're, you're a city. You're not stuck with us. Once the plan is created, you can contract somebody else to update it as well. So that's, there will be additional services required, um, because like you said, it's, it's not constant. Um, but no, it should not be, um, it'll, it should not be as, um, expensive to do that, um, uh, on the semi-annual basis that the updates are required, which as you can probably know from the legal profession, you can't have a plan sit still for 15 years in a cyber, cybersecurity moves faster than.
So you're, you're going to do an assessment, give us the assessment and then we're going to have to pay, we're going to have to hire someone to implement it.
That's what I was going to say.
Um, so the, there may be.
I mean, what do we get from this? Do we get an assessment? But then we have to take this assessment and put it into effect?
So the, um.
Spend more money on what we have to do to get this up to, up to the levels of the assessment, or do you do some of that on site?
So the, the assessment is the beginning of the contract that you see there. I think it's the, the first three tasks on the scope. So what, what, what those tasks are focused on is evaluating the totality of your system, how the, the lift stations in the plant all feed together, see if there's, you know, where are work, where can workstations access things remotely, you know, just get all those details together and identify the vulnerabilities that the city has in the wastewater system. The, the planning tasks, the, the tasks four, five and six of the document are set up to basically more or less design a system that may contain things that have, that need to be or have to be changed. Some of those, you know, there might be, like, hey, you need to replace your firewall or, or something like that. I'm not a cybersecurity professional myself, so excuse me for being a little imprecise with my language, but in, in many cases, it may be simply implementing steps that are low or no cost, something like making sure that operating systems on workday, on workstations are up to date, or that good password management practices are being employed, things like that. So there will be recommended steps. Not all of those are going to require the city to pay for them, and not all of them are going to have to be done by July first. It's, it's kind of a, the, these steps to make the city more secure will be fully outlined by that July one deadline though.
So do we currently have someone that monitors cybersecurity for wastewater?
Not specifically, no.
Is it like standard, I mean, I have no idea about this industry, but I mean, I know it's initially, I guess there is like a, I mean, do normally it's just people put a plan in place and that's it? Or do they have like monitoring of it, like, you know?
That's what they're going to define.
Is there hardware, software purchases? I don't know. Yeah, obviously cameras.
More like this.
Okay, so it's kind of like our ADA plan, when we, when we TDA required all the cities to present an ADA transition plan, they just, you know, we had to do that by a certain date, we all got those, most of us got them in on time, and then you're supposed to be doing something about that plan. So like every year, we've been implementing, we've been putting aside about twenty-five thousand dollars each year, the last three years, and making changes to ADA, I guess deficiencies we have around the city, our sidewalks, those type of things. And when we're building new buildings, you know, we're making sure they meet all the ADA requirements. So this is probably, this is probably going to roll out, it's probably going to be like there's an assessment, these are the recommendations, and then you'll have to start funding the, the things that they're going to need, the essential components that's going to allow us to have, you know, a, a good security system for our wastewater system.
So I guess to answer your question too about updating, like let's say Doris Farm goes online, and that big lift station goes online, I suppose in his, in his literature, he'd probably say when a station goes online, make sure you implement, implement that into your cybersecurity plan and put your firewalls up or what have you. I don't know what it is, Jacob, we haven't done the assessment yet, but when we get there, as new things come online, you know, more likely my, my responsibility to make sure we're keeping that plan updated, because all they're asking for is every two years to have it updated. So if I'm updating those two years, I submitted, that's updated. So that's why I don't think it's going to cost as much as the initial phase, but obviously it's going to cost a little bit every year just to keep it updated.
So who's responsible for those updates? Like who in your office will do that?
That we need, I'm more likely to have to contract someone to make those upgrades.
And you have wastewater manager to assist you with that.
Yeah.
These are all great questions. Again, that's why I wanted to do it as a study session, so you weren't tied up late tonight and working on, asking questions for these things.
And Jacobs, you picked because they were, remind me again how they were involved with the wastewater.
They actually built the wastewater facility, they designed, I should say, I'm sorry. They also did our master plan back in two thousand one, said our current infrastructure aired, did a lot of modeling for us back in the day with our lift stations, so they were very familiar with our system. So I felt like if we was to go backwards and try to get something, start fresh again due to the timeframe, I don't feel like we would have gotten done in time. I don't pay fifty grand a month for fines versus just get knocked out.
How many wastewater plants have you guys done in Tennessee?
Designed and built?
Yeah, roughly, I mean, I'm a common dollar, it's a weird question, but.
I wouldn't want to say twenty, thirty, maybe more, and it depends, they're not always complete overhaul, oh, near complete overhauls like we did here, but, but yeah, I'm, I'm working on five or six different facilities in the state now.
Okay, you guys did a fair amount of work.
Yes.
In Tennessee. Did you guys help in any way with the, the Senate House bills or is that?
We did not.
Did he call you guys in for expert?
No, would, would have been great, but no.
Two items, Task Five and Task Six. Can you kind of walk through those? Those are two of the higher-priced line items and, you know, sometimes you write a protocol and develop that and implement what you found during your original assessment for that protocol, and then just a final report. Typically, the file reports may not be as wide on as, as far as cost as the actual protocol.
So again, this is me trying to regurgitate information that I just asked a similar question to my cybersecurity professional and have over the last little while, we were developing that scope document. But essentially, that, that plan, so this is, this is not the assessment, this is when we already know your vulnerabilities. The plan is to identify the upgrades to, to your system. The, the plan is set to comply with standards set by the NIST, which is the National Institutes of Standards and Technology, it's a branch of the federal government that controls like what a responsible cybersecurity plan looks like. So there's a gigantic chapter on how that applies to industrial control systems, which the, at least the, the treatment plant would certainly fall under that. So the plan itself is taking, okay, here's, here's what we have, here's what the industry standard guidance documents say need to be in place for this system to be secure. And so we're going to propose this change, this change, this change, this change to get that, to get that plan together. So Task Five is going to be more the, the, the researching the standards based on what we have, the exploring of options, some of these may come to the city like, hey, do you want this or that? And we, that will likely be somewhat collaborative, we can have those kinds of discussions. But once we have everything set, the decisions are made for, for how this guidance document looks going forward, that's going to be documented in a report that, it's not, it's not going to be a five-page report, it's going to be a pretty lengthy document, expand, you know, going into significant detail on the city's system and how this plan is going to make the city more secure. So does that answer?
Can you go over budget?
No, if, sometimes, well, typically, you, you'll run a protocol, so evaluate a system, run, write a protocol, execute that protocol, write, write a final report. And to see both of those lines on price, essentially the same price, typically, I have, you know, in other industries, I've seen it priced together and it may not be at that level, so.
I mean, it could have been, I mean, we've got the, you know, it's, the way this is structured, Tasks Two and Three are kind of a parallel, the assessment's not as long, but they're doing the assessment, they're reporting out of the assessment. That's just how the, how the task was structured as, as we put it together, they could have easily been, Five and Six and Two and Three could have easily been combined into two larger tasks, with the costs would have been similar.
Mayor, if I may, so you asked earlier why I picked Jacobs, just because they actually did our modeling for future and current infrastructure, which they incorporated a master plan for the city back in two thousand twenty-one, and they also designed a new facility, so they already had their teeth into our infrastructure.
And they're overseeing the, the build on, we have, we have staff number on there every day that they're building, so.
Yes, that was my main reason.
Other problems, questions? Okay, I think that's all we have.